First, the item on the agenda is the street maintenance plan. So Mr. Luke Peter with Professional Engineering Consultants is here to go over the plan.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I'm here to talk about the 2026 Street Maintenance Plan. Click it works here. So just to start, just to give an overview of all the work that we've done in the past three years. Obviously, we've done a lot, as you can see in the picture here. The last three years, we've prioritized a lot of the neighborhood streets. So that kind of blends into what we're going to do this year is give the neighborhood streets a little bit of a break and do more of the arterial streets in Bel Air's roadway network. But just want to start here, obviously showing you that we've done a lot of work. There's been new construction that's been added to your system. All those are concrete, I believe. But that bleeds into our plan for next year. This is just a very quick overview of all the areas we're planning to talk about tonight. Obviously, some arterial improvements to Woodlawn, Rock, potentially 53rd Street. We're just outside of here, or outside of City Hall here, as well as a few neighborhood milling overlay projects. Again, we're going to touch on all these in detail, but just a quick snapshot of what we're looking at as priorities for next year. To start, we'll start with Woodlawn. So from 45th Street to 53rd. You can see the picture in the left there is the limits where we're proposing doing a two-inch overlay. Similar to what was done on 45th Street this past year, just that half mile that we ended up throwing in at the end. I'm doing a two-inch overlay and then at the intersection at 53rd, as you can see in that top picture. Doing some overlay as well as those areas shown in green, doing some reconstruction. You can see in the bottom right picture there, there's not much of a radius on those. The east side of that intersection, so people kind of cut that corner, drive over the gravel area. I'm sure you have to maintain it. And throw some new gravel on it all the time. So while we're doing some overlay of the intersection, we might as well kind of reconstruct. Those two radii and actually get you some pavement to drive on so that people aren't cutting that corner on dirt essentially. Then we touched on, I think when I was here in May. If we're doing this overlay, doing the restriping, the potential of restriping in front of Isley Elementary. So this is just south of 53rd. So right is north on your screen. So the top picture there is the existing lane marking. It's two lane with shoulders on either side. We wanted to look into potentially using that extra shoulder width that we have to work with on Woodlawn. And stripe out left turn lanes into the two entrances of Isley Elementary School. So that's what that bottom picture could look like. Coming out of that, I think it was May presentation, we needed to do some investigation. On what the pavement thickness of the shoulder is to make sure that it's a sufficient, you know, cross-section. To handle all that through traffic that we're now putting on it. So since then, last week, we went out and did some pavement cores to the shoulder. So you can see the locations where we got those in that graphic to the right. So we got, you know, pavement cores both north and south of 53rd. In the shoulder and on average, it was about seven inches of asphalt on six-inch crushed rock base. Which we believe is sufficient enough to carry our traffic. Also with the two-inch overlay that we would be doing, we'd be adding an extra two inches of asphalt. So essentially, you're looking at nine inches of asphalt on six-inch crushed rock base. We see no reason to.
Will that be, will that be adequate for trucks?
Yes.
Because you will get trucks down there. I mean, we do now, so.
Yes, I would say so. I mean, typically when we do new construction, it's eight on seven, so eight inches of asphalt and seven inches crushed rock base. So I don't see any reason to fully replace the shoulder. It seems sufficient enough. For that traffic. So one other consideration for the left turns. Is north of 53rd is technically City of Kichai. They maintain that street. So if we're wanting to do left turn lanes for the northbound lefts at 53rd. So you can see the intersection here centered on screen. So if we want to do lefts for that northbound traffic. We would need to do the same configuration on the north side of 53rd to mirror that. That would just require some coordination with Kichai. We would need to get their approval to do that kind of restriping. We wouldn't propose doing, you know, extending any of our overlay. We're just going to overlay the intersection. But we would need to at least restripe in Kichai's roadway network.
The only comment I would have about that is that restriping in Kichai's section, I would rather you did a dotted line across there instead of all the yellow. And, and, and make that more like people really drive because otherwise they'll just drive over the yellow hood. And it seems like that probably would be cheaper to do, but I probably insignificant difference in cost, but yeah.
Yeah, we can look at that. So just consideration there. We just had to coordinate with Kichai a little bit. So the cost to do this, so all the two-inch overlay on Woodlawn from 45th to 53rd, plus the little bit of reconstruction of those radii at the intersection. Is around $275,000. I threw in a number for just restriping, so not doing any overlay. That would just be 20,000. That's kind of just to give you a number, just in case at the end of our discussion. Whether we want to hold off on doing it, the overlap of the construction that's going to go on south of 45th on Woodlawn, if we want to wait. So just wanted to give you both the numbers for that discussion if we decide to potentially pull out this and wait for another year.
Did you look at anything along resurrection? Like I see you got these left turn lanes and such here. Did you look at any opportunities along resurrection for, for those similar lanes?
No, but we could investigate further. I, I mean, I drove it on the way up here. It seems like it narrows a little bit once you get south, so it seemed like there's a little bit less room to work with. But that's something we could look at potentially doing. So that's Woodlawn. Next up is Rock Road and 53rd, that intersection which is pictured here. These are recent pictures. It's in a really rough shape, just outside of City Hall here. So we propose reconstructing the intersection there. There's also on the west leg, so west, just directly west on 53rd. There's a couple other spots kind of on the north and south end of the road there. That we would also want to include in that kind of reconstruction of the intersection. So those areas are pictured there where it's kind of distorted and obviously you can see the cracking. So what the limits look like in that main picture there is obviously the area shown in green, we're proposing reconstructing. With new asphalt and crushed rock base and then also those two kind of smaller slivers to the west there are picking up those pictures. Or those areas that I just had pictured there. And then the limits on Rock Road, we're proposing overlaying. Similar two-inch asphalt overlay on Rock from 53rd to 45th. If you remember last year, we were going to restripe Rock Road, ended up pulling that out. Because it needed some new fresh pavement before we did that restriping. So we're proposing just doing the section from 53rd to 45th. Because that's all we have budgeted for now.
Milling overlay?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure you aren't just overlaying the top of what you got. Okay.
Yeah. So.
Milling that, are we accounting for the possibility that it's junk underneath?
Yes, there may be some isolated areas where we would need to identify that. And actually, when I say a milling overlay, it'll be mainly just milling the transitions for the entrances. There's no really need to mill off all of that pavement.
What about down the center then? It's pretty rough down the center.
Yeah, we'll have to look at how to approach that. Yeah, I would need to talk to some people and figure out how to best approach that. It may just be the case where we fill that extra gap with extra asphalt.
I'm just thinking if you don't do something to remove something there, it won't adhere well with what you put down on top of it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll look into that because yeah, there's a big crack going on the center. So we need to make sure that that gets fixed with this.
The south end section of that probably maybe 500 feet, I don't know. There's a lot of deterioration, especially in the southbound lanes.
Yeah, well, when I identify that and my numbers and the estimates are pretty conservative, so we'll need to hash that out once we get to the actual bidding. So the cost of that, so that second number there is for the overlay, milling overlay on Rock Road from 45th to 53rd is around 175,000. The reconstruction of the intersection at 53rd is going to be around 100,000. I threw in an option, if you wanted to do a concrete intersection at 53rd. We're not talking curb and gutter or anything, just replacing the pavement. Obviously, the concrete will be more expensive. Just wanted to give you the option for discussion.
So you're saying it costs 45,000 more to do concrete than asphalt?
Yes. And I don't know where this would fit in your, like, your long-term planning, if this is ever going to need widening or a full intersection with a signal. If it's planning to get touched in the next 15 to 20 years, I would recommend the asphalt option. Again, the concrete's a great, like, long-term cost savings. Yeah, you pay a little bit more and long-term it's more beneficial. But if this is just going to get, you know, reconstructed and widened in 15 or 20 years, I, I would recommend the asphalt option.
There's two issues going on there with that is that, that may be a commuter road for K254, depending on what KDOT decides there. And the other is, is that Transit has recommended a roundabout for that, for that intersection, not a, a. Traffic lighted intersection. Of course, I don't think we're ready to pull the trigger on anything like that today. But I, I'm going to be in favor of the asphalt simply because of that. Otherwise, I would say concrete's are really preferred because. The stopping issue with, that you have with, with asphalt.
This is one instance where I would lean towards asphalt because we're hoping for. New businesses, more, more traffic coming to that area over the next five to 10 years. And we'll probably have to redesign that whole intersection. So I would put in something that's got a 10-year lifespan and. Think about turning it out in the future.
Luke, one more thing on a rock road. So besides the crack in the middle, that, that road is not very wide. This isn't widening it. But there is some issues with the shoulders. I mean, clearly, it's the same thing as in the middle. It's a huge drop-off. So is there anything in that budget for? Kind of dressing up the shoulders with rock or is it just kind of, just touching the asphalt?
Just touching the asphalt's the number that's in there now. I wouldn't think that would be crazy expensive to do some sort of like, you know, two-foot rock kind of shoulder and doing some regrading of that back slope.
It just kind of feels like we should plan on it because this is probably the last thing we'll do to rock, probably before it gets reconstructed. So that'd be my guess. That we should probably spruce that up while we're, while we're at it. I know that Public Works has touched it a few times, but if we're going to have a contractor bid, it might be worth including that in the scope.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Would that be given that we just a couple of years ago put rock down the side of it and it's pretty much gone again? Would that be something we could put two or three inches of asphalt on? Or is, would that be a bad idea because it's, people are going to tend to try on it? We could almost make it a very thin bike lane if we put a little bit of asphalt there.
It'll also be more expensive if you waste a bunch of asphalt on it too.
I would want some sort of base on that, not just asphalt.
Okay, just asking.
Anyway, I just figured I'd speak up because I feel like that, we, we wouldn't want to overlook that if we're going to go through doing the other work.
Maybe that would be an option to add on.
Yeah, we can do that.
So with, with that in mind, in relation to Woodlawn, would you be, when you put in these turn lanes? Are you going to add shoulder that's dirt or is it just going to be a drop-off?
I think for the turn lane where we're widening, we're going to have to do something. So it's not just, we're going to have to do some regrading or some sort of shoulder.
I was hoping there'd be at least some shoulder there.
Yeah, we're also going to have to move. I think there's a school zone sign that gets really close to the road now. So there will have to be some additional work there to make that work.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. So Bel Air Heights Neighborhood, we did some work in this neighborhood last year. If you remember initially in our plan last year, it was just to do some work on the bulbs of the cul-de-sac and that was it. Well, we got out there, it kind of ended up blowing up and, not blown up, but it extended. We ended up doing more work than we had initially anticipated. So the, you know, the two south cul-de-sacs, we completely reconstructed. And then we just left the bulb of the northmost one. And that left us in kind of an awkward spot where kind of in hindsight, we probably should have. Milling overlaid the entire neighborhood at that point. But it was at the end of the project and we kind of had to stop somewhere. So it kind of got caught in an awkward spot. So we would propose going back and doing the milling overlay to the rest of the neighborhood that we didn't get to last year.
Is there any storm sewer in that area?
Yeah, there is. I know there's some in the cul-de-sac.
Okay, the reason I ask that is because I think Congressman Smith had said something about water percolating up through the road. And if there's storm sewer in there, maybe we can do something to direct that water to that storm sewer so that it can not percolate up through the road.
Potentially. Yeah, if you guys can get us the location of where that's.
Yeah, the storm sewers are down near 45th. But all along that stretch from the stop sign, which is up there at that intersection. Everything's south, pretty much the moisture comes up out of the ground underneath. So I would recommend we do something that's a little more resilient. I know if we did concrete, it might help or other things to manage that seepage. Which it's kind of like groundwater you're dealing with a little bit, not as bad as probably as Woodlawn. But at least it's noticeable when you come down. And right now, and that wasn't done that long ago. And it's pretty much fracturing the base on that right now and it's already popping out. So I, I would like to see an option if we did concrete or something to help mitigate the water.
Yeah, I'll need to look into that. I mean, obviously the concrete option.
The rest of the area, it doesn't really have that issue, but that one part, because it's pretty good slope there, there definitely is an issue with moisture.
Okay.
Luke, I think a lot of that, from what I recall, is all curb and gutter drainage down to 45th. I don't think there are curb inlets. And I also do think there's a lot of sump pumps that run pretty much continuously through there. In fact, I've slipped on my bike at one of those locations because it's pretty slimy. So what you're describing could just be surface water.
Yeah. Yeah, and it might be a bigger issue that we don't have the funds in the street maintenance to figure out, but we'll look into that.
Look at something a little more long-term, maybe. It'll hold up.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So that's the Bel Air Heights Neighborhood. Also Edgemore, so this is Edgemore, just north of 37th Street. It's fallen into a pretty bad shape. Those are recent pictures there. Edgemore got used a lot during the construction of Woodlawn.
Really falling apart.
It was kind of the unofficial detour. So it got used a lot. Once the Woodlawn construction kicks back up, I'm sure it will continue to get used again as like an unofficial detour. So this one, I mean, it needs the, it needs a milling overlay for sure. Definitely some patching. I estimated for like 10% of. The street needing patching and the numbers will show you. This is one we flagged as potentially pulling out. Once we show all the numbers, we need to kind of pull something out because we're a little bit over. What we have budgeted. That's kind of why we're here to have that discussion. So again, it's similar to Woodlawn north of 45th. There's some overlap with the construction that eventually is going to happen. South of 45th on Woodlawn and whether we want to tackle this now or do it after that construction. So we'll have that discussion at the end here. Then that little piece of Perrington, just north of the Edgemore limits that I show. That didn't get tackled with the Pearson's milling overlay we did last year. In hindsight, it should have been. That's on me hand up. It's kind of one of those awkward transition streets to the Pearson's neighborhood to Edgemore. And just kind of got left off. Anyways, so we propose going back and doing the milling overlay and a little bit of patching to that street.
Because I noticed when you completed map, you actually show it's completed, but I know it's not.
Yeah.
It is, it needs to be done.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, also on Edgemore, when you, when we take it, take down Oliver, it also becomes a main thoroughfare. So it's going to be hammered for Woodlawn, it's going to get hammered for Oliver. And I think you should assume half of that thing is going to have to go all the way down. To think it's only 10%, I think is crazy. It's going to be way more. If not, all of it. We'll have to go all the way down and start over because it's really in bad shape.
Yeah.
So I'm just want to make sure we don't do what we did last time and have all these change requests. And because we totally underestimated what was going to be needed, I'd rather, you know, look at it a little more carefully upfront and budget appropriately.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll go back and look at the numbers there, make sure we have enough. So with that being said, the numbers I come up with for those three, the Bel Air Heights around 75,000. Edgemore's around quarter of a million and then that little stretch of Perrington. Or Perryton, however you say it, is 25,000. So next on the list is 53rd Street, so just outside the windows here to the north of City Hall. Between Woodlawn and Rock Road, there's a stretch of it if you're going eastbound. On that south lane of 53rd, basically you're going past the school. Once you hit the hedge row. It gets really bumpy, kind of a roller coaster ride through there. And then once you get east of the hedge row, it gets much smoother. So it doesn't really take an engineer to figure out that it's definitely the hedge row that's causing the issues with the road for that section. And there is no magical solution to resolve the issue that isn't just removing the hedge row. And putting new pavement down. I've talked to Ann, I've talked to Randy Downs of Cedric County, talked to everyone in our office. And yeah, there's just no magic bullet solution. The hedge row has to go long-term if you want to, you know, stop dealing with this distorting of the pavement. That the hedge row is causing. So.
My view on this section of road is we leave this alone until we find out what KDOT's going to do with K254. And we should know that within nine months or so, they're doing that plan study right now. And we should have some idea of what their conceptual ideas are sometime later to late next year. And they won't have done design, but at least they'll have conceptual plans by then. And then we can have a discussion about this. But until we know what they're doing, these are, these may become commuter roads that they will want to expand and do a lot of things with. And if we go spend a lot of money on this, we're just, we're just some bad money after.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. So this one might make sense to pull out.
Are you proposing doing something to the road itself or just taking out the hedge trees?
We propose, I mean, to resolve it, we take out the hedge row and then basically just replace the south half of the pavement. To the limit shown here, which is essentially from the start and end of the hedge row.
If we take out the hedge row, is there room south that we can plant some new trees?
Oh, for sure. Yeah, there's plenty of space from that hedge row to the fence line. You can see it in the picture. That's all right away. So yeah, there's plenty of space to work with there.
Think we need to be concerned with eliminating trees. We need to be keeping as many trees as we can.
Yeah, yeah, and that's the one downside.
I can see that it's close to the road and it's a problem and maybe we should just be taking out the hedge row and ignoring the pavement. For the next year and planting some new trees, let them get started.
And might, might I suggest so drive this, drive this stretch when you're out and about.
I was actually about to speak up about that.
I drive it all quite often. I know what it's like. Yeah.
Part of, part of, as I get more and more years under me, I went to, I go to lunch with or brunch with Public Works every quarter or so. And this is one of their main problems with, you know, plowing roads and whatnot is people.
Oh, sure.
Crashing off of it or sliding off of it or driving off it because it kind of is an awkward run. I'm not saying you should include it. I completely understand Mares. I just want everybody to kind of be aware of it. It is a little, a little.
It's got a fairly deep ditch.
Fairly deep ditch.
Nothing we can do that short of replacing the whole road.
Oh, I have my two cents. So I was going to say the same thing, Ted. So drive this stretch if you haven't. One, it's, it's pretty roller coaster-y. Two, it's so rutted, it does kind of pull your tires in different directions. And that's doing the speed limit, right? Which we should all be doing the speed limit, but this is also the stretch of road that a high school kid was going over 100 miles an hour. It does concern me.
These roads aren't for that.
It does concern me. The, the road is narrow. There's no shoulders. At best, we could hope to have something back from KDOT by the end of next year because that study goes through like this time next year. So we're talking a year and a half. So we're talking a year and a half potentially before we have actual information to make a different decision on.
I think the contract is nine months.
I can do the math. What I'm speaking about, Mayor, is I disagree with the thought that we could wait that long. I, I am concerned with it as a safety hazard. Right now, I've driven the road. If you haven't, go drive it, see what you think. And then I think we should have another discussion about it because I think it is worth considering. And I agree with you, Mayor, that we may be putting some, some money at it to just tear it up in a couple of years. But it's kind of the same discussion that we had just recently on forty-fifth street. Where we did a similar situation for a different reason, wasn't because of trees. We repaved that knowing that road's just not going to hold up for two more years. This is kind of in the same vein in my mind and, and it is a concern. I do agree with the tree comment. I think that if we take out the trees, it's tough to not put something back. And I do like the idea of not wasting money, but this one might be one of those ones where we might be kicking the can a lot longer than you'd think. And we might get to a point where, kind of close the road, I would hate to have to do that too. So I think it's worth probably having more discussion on it. And so anybody that hasn't driven that, go drive it, see what you think, and we can have some more information to kind of chat about it.
So let me go back. Were you proposing to mill it and overlay it or just overlay it? Or what were you proposing here on?
Basically reconstructing it with seven inches of asphalt on eight inches of crushed rock base, just for the limits shown here, just for the south half. And then having the option, so.
Well, I'm asking because I think that road, that mile of road was supposed to have more asphalt on it anyway. It was supposed to have another three inches overlay. And if we just did a three inch overlay, would that? Buy for another several years instead of doing a full construction.
And, and maybe even waiting to remove the trees, knowing it's not the full solution, it's probably just to get us by.
It's a start to remove the trees and put some asphalt on it so it's flat. Without spending any more money than we have to.
And then knowing we're just going to reconstruct it probably in the next five to ten. I don't know, I'd like to think about the options and not just discount it, not kick it down the can, you know, can two years. I don't know if it can last that long personally.
Yeah, I mean, there's a bunch of different options and it's kind of dependent on how long you want it.
To last.
Six, yeah, essentially.
Again, just like the intersection at fifty-third and Rock, I, I would say in five to ten years, that whole thing's going to need redesigned. So I don't want to spend any more money than we have to to make it safe.
Well, just so, just so you know, so the numbers I have in here, so that hundred and twenty-five thousand would be, you know, reconstructing it with a new pavement section. Just the South Lane for the whole stretch of the hedge row. I'm estimating if you want to also include removing the hedge row, doing some overexcavating, it'd be around three hundred thousand. I would want to spend a little bit more time with that number, especially if we're going to be adding trees for replacing what we're tearing out. But just to give you an idea of ballpark. And then if we were to do a two-inch overlay on the rest of fifty-third, not just that section that we'd be replacing. It would be an additional around a hundred thousand dollars to do that. And that's just from the east side of the school to Rock, the section in front of the schools in pretty decent shape. So just some numbers, again, we'll have continued conversation about this stretch, it sounds like. So the last little project on the list is Web Road restriping. So these recent pictures of Web Road from forty-fifth to the highway, obviously the markings are in really rough shape. So we propose, you know, restriping it in the exact configuration it is now. Just putting some new markings down, that would be in the range of thirty thousand dollars. And then tacking on our full-time inspection costs and our design costs is around a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So all of those added up, all of the stuff in the first column, you know, the first option is around one point two million. Obviously more than the nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So there's some different approaches. It sounds like potentially fifty-third, we could pull that out. We can potentially, you know, bid all of the rest of the stuff. And bid it in a way where we could see where prices come in, see if we can do as much or as little as we can. Again, in our discussions with the city, Edgemore, potentially Woodlawn would be ones that make sense to pull out. Again, if it goes over budget. So that's the plan for this year. And the numbers behind it. I have slides in here for, you know, the next kind of five years, what we'd be planning. If you want to spend time on that, we, we can. It's just kind of modifying what we had already kind of presented, just trying to forecast what makes sense for the next five years. You know, potentially we're going to have to address all the concrete streets. Maybe you do some sidewalk repairs, like what's shown here. Yeah, if you want to discuss the next five years, we can do that. But with that, questions?
Well, I want to say I appreciate you getting a, extending this out to the five-year plan because it's something. I think we should make this a rolling five-year plan so that we are always doing this look ahead. Yeah, it's going to change, we know that, but at least we're getting some look ahead. We, we know what our worst issues are and our, our better issues are. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I think this is a great start. One thing I'd want to put in for future years, two, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, somewhere in there, maybe not that long. But I think we're going to have to take some serious looks at fifty-third and Webb and fifty-third and Greenwich. As that industrial area grows, we're going to need traffic lights or something so that all those trucks coming and going can do so safely.
One comment on the restriping of Webb, I know there was a commitment by Cedric County to re, to do a mill and overlay on part of that web. I want to stop the restriping before that's done. So, okay.
I, I had two quick questions to Tom's point about really studying ahead of time. But I know last year, at least I learned, you, you don't know sometimes until you dig in. What did we learn last year? And maybe as a question for Ann, like what percentage should we reserve as a, have as a buffer for surprises?
Gosh, it's really hard to say exactly. I mean, we did have, yes, we had a lot of change orders last year, but we did have plenty in the budget to make that work. So we did plan it in a way to leave us a bunch of wiggle room. So I think that continues to be important. I think bidding it out at the start of the year is also very important to get good bid prices. We learned that last year. So hopefully we get, we're going to get this out, you know, at the start of the year this year. So those would be the two that would jump out to me. I don't know if Ted or Ann has any additional.
I think we need to plan for more overage based on this year's events. Because we used all of what was thought of for the overage plus some, we had to dig into some of our reserve funds to pay for it. We had the reserves, it wasn't really an issue as far as having the money, but we did go way over what we were planning on spending.
And in there, we did also have like the Kruger pipe failure that wasn't planned for, that was an extra hundred thousand. Forty-fifth, that wasn't planned for. So we did actually add more than.
I'm, I'm just saying that we, we're going to find other things here too. So I, I'd rather have less work and have more buffer, I guess.
To Emily's point, really the only thing that we can do to more accurately assess the road. And potentially what's below it is do some geotechnical exploration prior to, and that's kind of up to council. It, it's really kind of a average game. How much work do you want to do in advance? And how much risk do you want to take? Even doing the geotechnical work, that's one four-inch core out of a. Pretty large pavement section. So every, every additional core you do, the, the cost adds up. So it's really just kind of that balancing act, trying to figure out where the most bang for the buck is, where are the most concerns? Tom's concern about farmsteads, very well taken. That's one place where I would recommend that we may, that maybe we consider punching at least one or two holes just to see what's down there. Is this something that we think is, I hate to use the word, but a spring, something that's perpetually running water? Is it just due to sump pumps? Is it just due to rainwater and not having a adequate drainage? That's what we were kind of hoping to do with the project last year. Where we were kind of hedging our bets that if we fixed the pavement issue, we could get the water to run into the inlets. Instead of sitting on the pavement like it has been for years. We've got a much better pavement section now that should hold up to the. The delivery trucks, the trash trucks coming and using that to turn around. So we're hoping that that helps, but you know, Tom had said that it's, that there's areas that are starting to crack up. So I don't know, that, that's kind of where we need the direction from council. How much money do you guys want to throw at this? How much additional pre-work do we want to do? Even just looking at the surface, I would have guessed that the Pearson's neighborhood would have had a lot more. Full-depth patch repairs and that Summit Hill wouldn't have had much because it was a better overall cross-section. The road didn't look nearly as bad, but then Pearson's neighborhood didn't have hardly any patching in it and Summit Hill had all of it. So, you know, it's really kind of, it's, the, the best minds are kind of maybe struggled to see it, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And just something to, something to think about as we move forward with these projects.
I think that's a valid thing to consider. I, I do believe on farmsteads area, there's a lot of known groundwater in that area. I would be really surprised if you didn't find that this whole issue that Tom's identified is, is a groundwater issue. There's, there's, there's streams in that area, we know that.
Sure. And so with, with that, that's something that we're going to have to do. The trench drains, kind of like we're working on with Woodlawn. And that's really the only way to get that out of, to, to give that water somewhere to go, to protect the street, to protect the base. So, you know, that's, whether we want to do that now or later, that's, that's your decision, kind of. We're here to help and provide information, but ultimately.
My, my vote is that you do, if, if you have to do less projects, you do more quality projects so you don't have to revisit them so quickly.
Do you think if, do you think you had adequate amount of allowance or contingency? Or would it be good for you to have a tool on all these repair projects that was sort of built in? To the, the budget of the contract, the construction piece or not? Do you feel like you had enough to work with, with the contractors as those things came up? Is there something we can do to help you make decisions easier to react or respond to decisions? I'm just kind of looking for things that might help you.
I think from my perspective, and I'll let Luke respond in a moment. The way we had it towards the end of that project where Ted and the mayor got together and kind of discussed the need. And we had a budget set and as long as it was within that budget and the two of them agreed, we were able to go forward. And then came back and reported to council and you guys basically confirmed or concurred with that decision. I don't, I'm not a fan of putting it in the contract to begin with. Because I don't want the contractor to think that there's extra work available. It's not for me, it was good to have that mechanism where we can kind of come as the project is going on. If there are issues that are found, then we can address them as.
And then you don't have to do a deduct at the end. Right, it's just additive. Yep, makes sense. Thank you.
I don't think it should be in the contract either. You were talking about doing some pre-testing though. At what point do we just say forget the pre-testing and add twenty percent overhead for possible? When does it become a balance that we've done so much pre-testing, we should have just said, fine, we'll pay for it instead?
Fortunately, that's not really my decision.
I guess the question is how much does the pre-testing cost? Because it might be better allocated to just put it into an overage pot.
Or do the under drains to begin with. You know, just spend the whatever money to have insurance.
Right. And it really kind of depends. It, it, are we doing core samples, kind of like we did on Woodlawn? Just to figure out what that pavement section is made of? Or are we doing a little bit more to investigate the need for under drains over on farmstead? It's, it really is a balancing act. Most people will say that geotechnical engineering, that geotechnical study to begin with. Is one of the cheapest insurance policies you're ever going to buy. However, it doesn't guarantee anything because, you know, it's just those four-inch holes poked all over the place. Several examples of both where it would have been a very good idea and we, and another example where we probably wouldn't have found the issues that we found, but.
I remember some position where you found the basically quicksand. And you had done testing and nobody knew it was there and it was just a small area, but it was a horrible problem.
Let's give Miss Hamburg a chance to answer, ask her a question.
That's a good way to think about it. I mean, if we have the extra reserve. I don't know, like you said, the cost of the geotechnical head, it's probably, it's probably a case by case when you look at the street. So my second question, I know at fifty-third and Rock, we talked about concrete and not to do it if we're going to touch it very soon. But I know a rule of thumb this council has used is go with concrete if it's thirty percent or less more. There's been a lot of inflation. Do you think that's still a good rule of thumb for a long-term concrete replacement?
Yes, for sure. Especially at intersections, it makes total sense because all the turning movements. It's just in this case where if you're going to tear it out in ten to fifteen years, that upfront cost of concrete doesn't make sense.
And you think thirty percent is still a good, good rule of thumb? All right, thanks.
Mayor Benaj, one, one thing, and we're not going to see it much this next year, but we just got back from LKM conference. Different treatment methods is going to be a discussion we have and so maybe some education over the next year for twenty-twenty-seven season. You can tell Mill and Overlay, we love it. That's one of the lessons I learned. Everybody loves it. It's the most expensive way to do things though. So we, we, we also just got to keep an eye on the other treatment options we have for our localized streets. So just to, we don't have that, that discussion today, but as you're walking through, seeing any type of training opportunities. You might take it to learn some more about, you know, micro, micro sealing or any of the other treatment options available.
So I would request that before we venture into any of this, we don't repeat what we did last year. And review our water and sewer line issues and all these neighborhoods, all these areas. So that we don't end up doing a sewer water thing after we just redid the pavement. So, okay, I know we've had that discussion before, but I want to make sure we don't, don't, just a lesson earned. Okay.
So I have a question in relation to bidding these projects. If we, if we put in up to a certain percentage of that, the amount of asphalt or pavement we're going to put in. And we say there's a forty percent that could be all the way, take it all the way down and redo it. Can you have it bid that way? Or do you think they'll just always use all of it, no matter how much? Because what I was worried about is it seemed like we got a good bid for the Mill and Overlay. And then we, they really hit us hard with every change request, which was substantially more expensive per linear foot. And I try to avoid that, so I don't know how much you, can you do that and say, we'll allow for forty percent or thirty percent? Or whatever the number is of the linear feet. So is that an option?
Yeah, one of the things that we've done in the past is put a quantity together to put in the bid package. Some of the prior repair and replacement projects that we've done where we knew we were going to have some over excavation. Of soft soils digging down two, three feet, refilling with rock. We didn't know how much. But we put in, I want to say like a hundred cubic yards of over excavation, just to be able to get a bid. You know, pretty decent bid quantity on that. It was an ad item, so it wasn't anything that the contractors were guaranteed that they were going to get. We just had that price available. And that's certainly something that we can do on this. I don't know, Luke, do you have any other suggestions?
No, I would need to talk to some people in my office. Yeah, it gets a little tricky with that sort of thing. Yeah.
So that, one of the things I'll say to that, Tom, is the key to, to setting up, you know, you can guess all day long about what could happen. But what we really want to do is make it A, easy for contractors to decide what it is we're trying to have them accomplish. That's what goes into the quantities and to help us budget as a city. But they can't be guessing, right? They're trying to compete. So it has to be very clear. And we as a city can decide, I totally agree with you, not putting it in the contract, but as we are budgeting. We as a city can decide how much do we want internally to have kind of to, to deal with some of those issues. When you look at stuff from a linear foot or a square yard or a square foot, it's, it's unfair to compare that when they have to do over X and all this other stuff. That's just something they're not going to assume they need to do unless you tell them to, because they're competing against other contractors. So the, the cost starts adding up because they're having to do additional scope. It's, it's, it's the extra excavation work that wouldn't have been involved. It's the putting back rock, which is a very expensive product, a crushed stone that's draining the bullets. Putting in whatever else the engineer decides is needed based on the field conditions. So it's not so much the contractor taking advantage of it as it is there's extra cost and scope and to deal with that pro, that project. So as an owner, we just got to decide how do we get fair bids, get good competition? And then have some amount to cover these types of projects. Because this is just sort of the nature of the beast with this road rehab. And then have some amount to cover these types of projects because this is just sort of the nature of the beast with this road rehab type project is we're going to run into this. So I think coming up with a really repeatable process, having something that we decide is a good percentage in our mind to say, we're just going to have 10%, you know, we're not going to use it all the time, but we want to have that in our mind as something that could be a reality. And when we go under that, great. When we go over it, we just kind of got to understand some projects are going to be worse than we predicted. And just kind of move forward with that process might, I'll say this one more time, and I know this is before. I think the single best thing we can do is make sure we have plenty of contractors bidding our work so we get good competitive prices. And I think it's best to try to bid this stuff before the end of the year, not at the beginning of the year, so that our contractors are loading up on our work for next year and not already loaded up and bidding stuff to fit in next year. So I'll just continue to say that I think the best thing we can do is push these things out towards the end of a year to start next year. That gives the contractors a chance to load their books. It also gives them the chance to maybe have some flexibility of schedule, when to start it and hit it hard right when the weather breaks. So I just wanted to kind of say that. I think that's the best thing we can do as an owner to be a preferred, you know, client or a preferred owner to work for.
Get in early.
Yep. Just get on the books. That's, that's, that's the tough part now as busy as contractors are.
So Ann, I like your suggestion of taking a block of whatever, some sort of conservative estimate. We'll get a liberal estimate, but a conservative estimate of how much of that is going to have to be re-rehabbed of the road and put that as an add-on in the bid so that there's an opportunity to be fair with contractors and everybody's looking the same, same thing.
And just kind of a little bit more on that. As Tyler was talking, I do remember the project that we did that on. We had, I don't know, several bidders and the one that came in low was low because their overall prices were very low. But then they put a very large number in that over excavation quantity. So we didn't really save anything by doing that. It was an order of magnitude. I don't remember the numbers. But it was very significant. So I mean, it's, it's something that we can do. We don't always win when we do that. So it's, it's always kind of a struggle to, it's, it's a struggle to figure out how to do it for the best advantage for.
You're never going to know the actual condition of the road until you start getting into it.
Exactly. And that's, that's the thing. Open fields are, you're generally fairly safe, but occasionally you do run into sand seams. But working in developed areas, it's, it's hit or miss.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on the street, street maintenance issues?
Excited to see it happening. Excited to see us planning more of it. I think our citizens appreciate seeing that money spent that way. So thank you for helping plan.
So as far as direction on how to move forward from here, what would council like to see? Would you like to see additional time to go drive down 53rd? Is there projects you would like to see us develop or not develop? Is there, I'm just thinking so we can get P E C started on working on plan sets. Do you, would you like us to do some geotechnical work to get this process moving forward? I'd like some direction so I can help Luke and P E C kind of move this forward.
I'll, I'll start out with the answer to that. One question I would have on Edgemore is, do you believe we could? So I kind of struggle with doing that right now because we have Woodlawn that's going to be repaired hopefully next year. And do we do that now ahead of traffic hitting it harder or do we wait and do it after? I know we've got a 45th. That one's tough for me because I can see the need, but where do we fit it? Where does, where does it fit in the schedule of stuff?
Yeah, that one I can see both sides of it because yeah, if people are going to use it more during that construction, it'd be nice if it was in better shape. But then you're putting extra wear and tear on newer pavement. I mean, we could potentially make it like an ad alternate and see if we get really good bid prices then, then make that decision then.
Yeah, I think you're going to have to delay Edgemore. If you want to get your contracts out early, they're going to want to start in the spring on this and we're not going to have Woodlawn done by then. So we'll be tearing up Edgemore while we're working on Woodlawn. So Edgemore may just not be able to happen next year.
It feels like you have to slice that and fit it in before 45th starts at some point in the future. So I don't know, my, my gut would tell me that one's coming out and not happening next year. It's probably happening the following year. So I, that would be my opinion on that. 53rd, I really think, as I said, I think that is worthwhile to do both the intersection, the repair piece west of the intersection and the section in the hedgerow, knowing that we're likely tearing it out in the next five years. But we got to do something. I would like further discussion if council needs more time to go drive it. I've driven it. I know what it feels like. I'd like it repaired, you know, sooner than later. The rest of it, I'll kind of leave, it looks like we've budgeted for it or at least we're a little over budget, it looks like. So we probably got to find some things to trim out to make the budget unless we're willing to spend more.
I think I see a line there at Bel Air Heights and everything above the Bel Air Heights, you go on and bid out and everything below the Bel Air Heights, you put it, you you put on the back burner as a possible later thing that we can look at. That's just the way it looks to me that it feels like. You know, I, I, I just don't think we should touch 53rd until we know what's going on with, with the K254. I realize some issues with it. I have driven it. I do know it's a bit rough, but it's always been rough. It was rough the day it was finished, right? So that was, that was a concern with that, with that road, its roughness. But that's just kind of what I think where we are on this. Because I don't think we'd be smart going into Edgemore right now because of the, because of the issue with Woodlawn. So.
If you shift Perrington up above Edgemore and not Perrington be the last item, would that be an issue because it's off, a street off by itself? Well, then I would move Perrington ahead of Edgemore and get that neighborhood finished.
I think that's good. Yeah.
It looks like just doing the math real quick, if we take Edgemore out and delay it a year, we're going to be within the budget, right? You take 250 off the 117.
Remember your 10 or 20% contingency.
Well, yeah, then we got to discuss what else you might want to take out depending on what percentage.
Right. I think that line's pretty close with Perrington up above it. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with moving Perrington up in the, in the list because it was just an oversight from last year. It was supposed to be done. So.
And you still have to pay the engineering. You can't, can't draw the lines out.
Yeah, we need, we need to figure out where we are on Web Road too, because that was. You're just doing restriping, but there's an overlay that would require restriping. That's in the thought process, right?
So, so Webb would just be restriping. This one came out of a few calls I've been getting lately on Wichita Hoops. Younger drivers come in and it's hard to see Webb. So I asked Luke to put this one on because I've, I think of the three now that getting calls about how faded it is at night, the striping.
I'm all in favor of restriping. Yeah, I just, I just know that the county is going to redo a section of it and it just makes sense for you to try if they're going to redo it.
It felt like the county sounded like it was on the books for this year or next. So I would agree. Let's do it at the same time. Let's do that and then stripe it.
Yep. Yeah.
So if we do Woodlawn, Rock, the 53rd and Rock, Perrington, and coordinate with the county on the Web Road restriping and figure out what and when they're going to do is, does that, whether we include that Web Road or not, kind of get that coordination? Is that kind of summation of what everybody's thoughts are? And then maybe we can work with some geotech and get that done on the Bel Air Heights before we move forward with that project.
Yeah, I'd like the Bel Air Heights in there, but I, I understand what your suggestion about geotech on that because you got to know what's going on with that water. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you should consider Bel Air Heights for next year, whatever it takes to get it done. And if it's 20% overwork on Bel Air Heights, that's really not a big amount of money. It's the other projects like Edgemore, if it's 20% over, that it certainly becomes an issue. Right.
I will work with Luke and P E C to get some geotech out on Bel Air Heights. And we'll start moving forward with that. Depending on what they come up with, you know, I'll meet with Luke and Ted and we'll kind of talk, talk this over and see where that comes. It will bring it back to you, kind of whatever we find.
And we're going to try and get bid, bid packets out like next month then or what? What's our timeline looking like? Because we, back to we want to get bids on it this year.
Yeah, as soon as possible.
And I think that's a great idea.
I just want to remind Luke, his contracts up next Tuesday will have as the contract on the agenda. So hold your thought there, John.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate all the input and it's a great, great amount of information there, but it's, it's all good. So thank you. Short-term rentals, I hope this is a short conversation, but okay.
I will do my bet. Don't ask any questions and we'll be okay, right? Thank you for at least letting me present this. This is not new concept. Short-term rentals have been happening in all organizations or all communities around us. Wichita created a short-term rental sort of compromise in their codes in 2023. I know other communities are grappling with that. I got involved only because I received a complaint from a citizen in Bel Air concerned about what was happening in a property near her. She asked me to come to the HOA and explain what the process currently is as it reads in the city code. So our city code, short-term rental is a use. And in our zoning code, that use can only be approved through a special use case, which requires a public hearing, coming to the planning commission, coming to the city council. And so as we think about the current code and how it reads, I began examining what Wichita was doing and, and wanted to come to you to talk about maybe some options that we could moving forward. So right now, the code requires that, as you know, every zoning district has a permitted use and they have conditional uses. Short-term rentals do not appear as a permitted use or a conditional use in any zoning district in Bel Air. And even if it was a conditional use, they'd have to file a conditional use case, which triggers the public hearing and all the approvals. What Wichita did, and it's a really good compromise, was that in order to reconcile the zoning requirements related to the use of a short-term rental in a zoning district, they created an administrative permit process. And that resolves the need to not go through a public hearing and the approval processes that allows information to be submitted to the city and an application and an acknowledgement that they're operating in the short-term rental. And then in addition, as our zoning code does, it requires them to have a general business license that's annually renewed. A very low cost here in Bel Air. And the same is true in Wichita. They have to file and have a business license because this is not a, and it's not a home-based business because they're not living in the business, doing a business. They are not living in the home typically and, and operating a business for other rentals. And so I had some questions ahead of time related to, I think the mayor said that this seems like a, as our code sets now, it seems a little cumbersome. And it is, it absolutely is. I think the whole point is to try to just reconcile what the zoning allowance is in any district like we would for any other parcel in our city. And it's how we do it that can make a difference. I think I also had some questions about, I'm, I'm trying to ref, I'm going, I'm going to pull up your email that you sent today, Emily. About the, unless you'd like to just ask or speak or have some thoughts, it's up to you. I can.
So I think I had three points on there. One thought was, you know, maybe ideally this would be dealt with at the HOA level. Number two was, I'll pull it up here in a second. Oh, number two was like just general issues, like if the complaints are primarily like parking and noise related, do we already have things on the books? To if they become an issue without doing anything. And then number three, if we do this, I, I would like, you know, if we, if we do regulate it at the city level, you know, maybe for that person that does it a couple of times a year, like have a certain limit of days annually or consecutive days before it would trigger you needing to come to the city because it's not an ongoing business or anything like that. Those were just some of my initial thoughts.
So I can address the first one and HOAs cannot regulate zoning code and zoning allowances or permitted uses in a zoning district. So that is a city level. Now there's other, in this instance, the HOA I went to, they have a regulation in their HOA that you can't have a business. That doesn't solve the zoning issue related to that parcel. And so that, that was the only thing that was in there. So we still have to have some sort of mechanism that allows the permitted use in that area.
So I was thinking along the lines, I know in some covenants, there's maybe along the same lines is they can ban rentals, but they can't like you're saying, they could outright ban it at the HOA level, but they can't really.
They can't address the zoning.
They want to have it and then put conditions on it. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that, well, how can I best answer this? HOAs can have all kinds of covenants and restrictions. HOAs can also dissolve if they vote to dissolve, which means that still leaves the city in, in a zoning. It doesn't, it doesn't address the zoning requirements to allow that use in a zoning district. And so I worry about that HOAs may not always be around. And then after they dissolve, then we're right back to having some zoning issues. So that's why after I looked at Wichita's short-term rental ordinance and the subsequent changes in their zoning code, it simplified it and made it less cumbersome for an owner to have a business in that relation, in that way. I know Chief is here and we can, we, we've had a mini discussion about the parking and general noise. Yes, they would typically call the police department. The parking issue in this specific instance was just related to them parking in the alleys and not having ability to get down the alley to the, their garages, right? And so I think that there's also ways to address some of those things and nuisances. And I'm not saying that any short-term rental owner is, you know, ignoring concerns or issues. That's, that's not what I'm saying. I think that we are just trying to resolve. And after we did a little bit of research on public notifications like Airbnb and Verbo, we, we have some rental, we have some short-term rentals in, in Bel Air. And it's probably time for us to consider that that's going to be a phenomenon that's going to continue. And if there's any other nuisances that occur, there's other mechanisms in our code that allow us to address that. If, if somebody wasn't mowing their yard, if we have a noise problem, if we have a, anything like that, we have some other mechanisms in the code that we can address those issues that you brought up. And I think that in addition, your, your threshold for rentals in the city of Wichita, it's short-term. I think they put a definition in it related to that if you're renting it out for 28 days or less, right? Which is typically Airbnb's, they do a come for the week or come for the weekend, whatever. But as long as it's less than 28 days in a, in a row, it's considered a short-term rental. They had to, they had to create a definition that didn't exist before. We have a bed and breakfast definition. The thing is about the bed and breakfast definition is it's really by room, right? It's a room definition. It only exists in two of our zoning districts currently, which is not the zoning districts that most of the, the rental, short-term rental properties are located in, in Bel Air.
So I think that the HOA thing, we need to have a, a code for this because there are a lot of neighborhoods in Bel Air that do not have HOAs.
Correct.
So e- even if an HOA could regulate this, we have a lot of neighborhoods that we, we need to regulate this. So I, I am in favor of, of creating such a code. So, and I kind of like the, the things that you, you've presented from Wichita. My only concern is I, I want to keep it fairly simple. And as I remember, because my wife has rented several of these for us in the last couple of years, I think there's always a daily fee that there's a charge to, that you would collect through V B R O or whoever the, the company is that, that the rental is being done through. So I think there's a daily fee that they also charge that, that the city ought to be collecting. I think it's like $10 to $20 a day. But I don't know the exact, what that is reasonable for that, but.
Yeah, I think, I think it can work both ways. I haven't delved into that side of it, but I understand that we do the same thing. We rent through an Airbnb when we go out of town and there is sometimes that entity collects fees, right? And reports amount. Sometimes they don't and it's up to the owner. I think it can work both ways. I know, I know you also asked me about the transient guest tax and we do receive that in the city. We don't have any hotels and we don't have any bed and breakfasts. So we're assuming that they're coming from the short-term rental. It's not public record and we can't share addresses. We know that we're receiving it and to date we do see, receive a permit, you know, a, a percentage of that amount. So I think to date Barry said something around $5,700 that we've received to date. So by the end of the year. So, by the end of the year, and that might account for
That maybe what that is.
Short-term rentals, yeah, that we're receiving that.
Okay.
I think we skipped the first and most important question here. Do we want to allow short-term rentals in the city of Bel Air? Because if we don't, we already have the rules and regulations that should prevent that. We're just not enforcing it.
That, we don't have the rules and regulations that prevent it. They can file a special use case and they would come before and we'd have to have good.
And then, we'd have to approve that. So, right now, nobody has done that. So, they're all illegal.
They're currently not zoned correctly and they do not currently hold a general business license. That is correct.
So, the question then becomes, do we even want to allow short-term rentals? And in my opinion, I do not. I think we've got enough rental property already in the city and we don't need to get into even more rental properties. And if we really have a use for this, then somebody ought to be put in a hotel and that's my opinion. And I would, I think this whole discussion is moot because I don't think we should even have them.
And I, I might have to refer to the city attorney and whether we can create a case in which we don't allow that to happen.
We've already got it. We've got, they're not meeting the zoning and they're not meeting the business license.
But they could, is what I'm saying. There is a mechanism for them to move forward.
But they don't right now. And to do so, they have to go through several hoops, at which point, somebody can say, no, we still don't want this. Or finally say, yeah, we do want something like this. But if we go through all this work to create that, that says we do want this and we're going to allow it. And I'm against even allowing it. So, like I said, I think this is all useless discussion. How many other people here want to allow Airbnbs in Bel Air?
I want to allow them.
I would like to go back to the problem before we jump to the solution.
Absolutely.
Because it seems like we jumped straight to the solution and we didn't ever address, do we want, do we want to allow it at all? And what is the problem? Is it noise, traffic, et cetera?
I, I think it just comes down to making sure that we are, just like we would any other parcel in our city, assign the appropriate use for the zoning district. That's what we do every day. Every time somebody comes to us and wants a zoning case, every time they apply for their platting or replating, whatever they're doing, we're assigning a zoning district. They're living within the parameters of that zoning district. And right now, we do not have a zoning district that allows by permitted use or conditional use a, a short-term rental. So, they have to go to another mechanism in our code that says, we want to conduct this kind of a business in this zoning district and we want you to approve that special use.
Does it matter whether the person is living and renting, living there and renting or, or just renting?
So, this is strictly non, the owner is not living in the home. They are strictly renting it out in short-term.
Okay. So, right now, if a person rents out a few rooms, that's, that's part of the bed and breakfast that's legal?
No, it's not legal. It's not a conditional use. It's still a special use. Bed and breakfast only have two, we only have two zoning districts. The zoning district that is a five-acre lot and a one-acre lot, which is our, our one, our, our, and our, our one estate. They're larger lots, more distance from other neighbors, which allows typically more parking. So, we have some homes that might be, I think there's a few of them that sleep 15 people. There's some that sleep 10. There's some that sleep six people, right? So, there's a variance of how many people and how much space is available in some of the homes. So, that creates different kinds of parking and those kinds of things, considerations.
Still don't see what problem we're solving other than creating revenue for the city. Because we haven't, we are, like we said, we already have a problem for the, we already have a solution for the parking and the noise.
We do, but not the zoning. And we require everybody else's zoning to be in order and updated.
Not the business rental zoning.
Except for the business rentals in this community. Everybody else is required to have a zoning district with permitted uses and follow the code related to that zoning district. In this use instance, they are outside of the, our code. So, that's the problem.
If somebody wanted the special use and they went through the process, then all the neighbors would know that's what they intended to do. And they would all be down here saying, no, we do not want this.
It would be a public hearing.
Is what's going to happen. And it would not get passed because we'd have 20 people saying, we don't want Joe to do this in our neighborhood.
Yeah, it is a public hearing. We will notify 200 feet environs around the property, just like we would any other case. Absolutely.
Maria, I did want to speak up and, and follow up on the question that was asked. So, legally, right now, we have a process in place that somebody would have to take through zoning case. Mr. Welch said, no, we don't want it. There's actually a legal process that we'd have to follow. We couldn't just say, no, you can't have it in our city. There's actually code, there's zoning, there's a special use case. Like, that, that case would have to be heard by the planning commission. So, I think we are, I agree with Greg. I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves because we haven't heard a case. And so, I was going to speak to this for a second. First, I want to be clear. There's this specific mention about Central Park and about the homeowner's association and the homeowner's association meeting, which I am a member of. I want to make sure that that's clear. I live in the neighborhood. I'm an HOA member. I did hear that a city representative was going to be speaking on the topic. I did not attend the meeting. So, the subject of the complaint is a neighbor and a friend. I want that to be clear. As I understand, one of our neighbors also has had an issue and has filed that issue with both the HOA as well as the city. Maybe we've had other issues in the past with short-term rentals. I'm not aware of any issues, but I'm sure from time to time, you guys get complaints on other properties for other reasons. I do know there's actually an additional property in our neighborhood that has been used as a short-term rental. It, like you said, it doesn't appear to be, just at least by the term, short-term rental, right? Our code is, is dated. I, I think we've been updating codes. And, you know, as far as that goes, there's not a outright prohibition of it. But like you, like you say, there is a conditional use. There's a permitted and a non-permitted. And this would fall under a case that would be a special use, would have to go through a process. And like you mentioned, business licensing requirements. I'm keeping an open mind on this. I, I know a lot of both sides of this. I'm, I'm learning about how our city is, is dealing with this. I do think solving this is important because I do think there are more of those properties in our city than we probably know. I think honoring safety and growth of our city as well as thinking about property rights, which are a thing in the United States of America. And I think that's why we have zoning code. And that's why we go through processes because we want to honor both property rights, right? The person that, you know, clearly wants the right to use their property a certain way and then a person that has been impacted by the way that's being used, whether that's by parking or whether that's by noise. As we've talked about, we have other mechanisms to deal with that. In fact, there are properties in my neighborhood, I have an alley, that occasionally an owner uses the alley as parking. That is not allowed. That's actually not allowed. I think it's by bylaws, but it's also something that I'm sure the police get called on occasionally because of safety concerns. So, it's not just the short-term rental. While that may have caused some additional parking issues, there are owners that have friends over that cause parking issues. So, I don't know that that's mutually exclusive to a short-term rental. So, I wanted to point that out. Also, I think it is worth figuring out, how do we want to deal with this? I, I know Wichita, you know, I, I mentioned that to Ted, I think over a year ago when their code was passed. And maybe we need to think about either what other suburbs are doing on this. I don't know if we've done research on that. I know we've got Wichita standard, but I agree with Mayor. Why do we need to make it more difficult? Maybe there's a simplified version of how we could go about that. And I would certainly be in favor of reviewing that. Following up on the HOA comment and question, I, I agree. I think HOAs, I guess the way I look at that is HOAs if they don't want it, right? So, currently, we don't allow it, but there is a process to allow it, right? So, HOAs could not keep that from happening currently. But could an HOA, and maybe this is a Maria question, if a specific HOA and their membership had an issue, could they have a more restrictive bylaw that says we don't allow rentals? And more specifically, we don't allow short-term rentals? That would be over the top of the city's code. I'm just talking as if we're thinking about potentially putting together something that's streamlined. Would that be an option for an HOA?
An HOA could have a covenant that says none of their home, the property owners can operate a business, a short-term rental. And if so, there are consequences. But those consequences will never have the legal authority of a municipality, which could involve code enforcement, a citation, a complaint that ultimately takes you to municipal court, where a judge sees you and discusses how you're going to proceed. So, a HOA covenant would be within private party to private party. Whereas with the zoning code, Paula's department would have the authority to send out the code enforcement officer, which could end up in the municipal courtroom.
Gotcha. Appreciate, appreciate that.
If the HOA said that they weren't going to allow these, they could set a fine, like $1,000 a day or something type fine and enforce that against the owner of the house? Is that a possibility?
And I'm not suggesting we're going to solve this now. I just wanted to put this question out there because I think as we think about how we're going to potentially adjust the code, it might be worth understanding, you know, would HOAs still have their own ability to take that to whatever level they would like? So, that's just a question to follow up on. And just as sort of a, I don't know, a personal note, I think it would be important to better define this. I think the, the thought that our code is doing enough is probably short. I, I don't think it's addressing enough of the, of the short-term rental language. Clearly, there are short-term rentals in our city. And so, I think if we're going to do anything, it would be wise to consider how we either adjust our current language or come up with a specific project for short-term rental or a process for short-term rentals, just to help clean that up. And, and I know we're doing other things with the comp plan and other codes and other zoning. So, I think that would be good for both sides. The ones that want to use their property potentially as a short-term and for folks that want to have their voices heard and want to understand how they go about advocating for that. So, that's all I had to say. I just wanted to cover all the bases. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
So, two things. Well, I want, I want to make sure I made it clear when I was talking about that third item about a threshold. I get the definition thing, but I was thinking like, if you were somebody that does this, like, oh, I'm typically gone once a quarter over the weekend and I choose to rent out my house, maybe you wouldn't even have to come see the city for that. That was, that was my thinking there is threshold triggering it before it even came. To the degree that we're going to do anything, do want it to be simple. Councilmember Dean did a good job, you know. People, people have lived their lives and travel in all different ways. They have property rights if they want to, you know, open up that, that, their home and, and make some money during that time. I, I think they definitely need to be allowed to do that. The other issue was, and I received, I, I don't live in Central Park and I'm, I'm not sure how many, how many of these are around town. And I received a note from at least one resident that, that wanted to comment tonight. So, I don't, I'd like to hear from residents or if even if you can kind of give a synopsis. Can you give any details about what the specific issues were? Was it parking? Was it noise primarily? Or were there other issues?
Yes. And, and then I was notified about the, another property that was also a short-term rental. And we do have some nuisance codes related to that. The owner doesn't live here. They live out of state. They rent through Verbo and Airbnb and however they do. And they didn't mow their yard. And they have all these other issues that we continue to work on. So, that's what I meant by, we have other mechanisms in place to handle some of the nuisance pieces. We just didn't have a easy streamlined version of addressing the zoning. And that's why we're following the code. But then, as we talked about, that there's probably some options if we wanted to streamline it and make it more administrative than a public hearing kind of process.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt.
So, listening to all the input, I've got a couple of concerns if, so if a customer, or I mean, a citizen has a house, they've been living in it for 20, 30 years. And then, all of a sudden, next door, they want to do a short-term rental. And then, the amount of traffic, the amount of noise, all that just goes up. Do we have an obligation to protect them from that? Since when they bought their home, none of this really was an issue. So, I mean, I understand why, where people should have some freedom to use the property in a different way. But everybody in that neighborhood, when they went into that neighborhood, assumed this was going to be a residential area and that's what it was going to be. Even if it was a rental, that's different than having the short-term groups come in. Especially if it's a bigger house and you get a big parties or whatever it is. And I'm familiar with this in some ways. And it goes for a while and it's okay. And then, all of a sudden, you have a big disaster. And then, people that are doing this stop. But I just want to protect the citizen that has the home and that's next to one of these situations. But I also want to give people some rights. So, if we somehow allow people to do this, can we pull back because the neighbors, all of a sudden, this is not working? Is there any way to say, no, you can't anymore? Or once we go forward, are we stuck and we have to stay? It's always allowed and we can't pull it back? I'm worried if it's a real issue in certain areas, we can't recover.
This is a tough one.
So, I don't know. What, I'm just wondering.
Would, would there be an annual business license that could be revoked?
I don't know.
We'd have to have a reason to revoke the license.
The neighbors are complaining.
Nuisance cases, but we, we get nuisance cases in all kinds of ways, right, in all kinds of properties. And we don't necessarily go in and remove somebody from their home because I've been out, you know, 20 times to tell them to mow their yard and they don't do it. So, I think we'd have to look at remedies related to, I, I don't know that we've ever revoked a zoning case, a PED case, a special use case, conditional use, because they're, they're operating in good faith that we've approved it and they're moving forward as they should. And it becomes a business, right? It is a business. They're earning money. It's, it may be their full-time occupation. So, I don't know that we could revoke it, but that would have to, we have to create quite a research project in that. The business license, they'd have to be violating something that would prevent us from continuing to allow them to utilize that business. And I don't know what those mechanisms would be at this point unless it was built in somehow. And I can look at some of the remedies that we have in our code right now. If they're violate, you know, there's violations related to the general business that comes through the clerk's office. But I'm, we, I'm sure I can pull some research together for you to understand that piece.
I don't know, Maria, is there any, anything that comes to mind of how you, if we went forward on this, how can we ever pull back? Or can we? That's my concern.
Many cities develop regulations because they want to either be more laid back or more restrictive. But more importantly, they want to be consistent. If the planning commission or the board of zoning appeals were to receive, I don't know how many permits, it's possible there could be facts taken into account and inconsistent dispositions. But with zoning regulations, you get to take into account the input of the governing body, the, what, what the, I think the comprehensive plan even, how those are treated. And if in 2026 or 2027, the temperature changes, then those zoning regulations, a new ordinance could come into play to make it more restrictive or less. You, it's really up to the governing body to change those, the ordinances, which become code. The other thing that I was going to mention, before I forget, Chief is here and he mentioned a really good point. All of his points are really good. The smartest chief around. But if a HOA does have specific covenants, it's really truly up to the HOA to enforce. Some HOAs are very active and will be very involved. And then, some others are laid back. I think sometimes our police department is pulled into the situation saying, we have this covenant and we want you to enforce. And that's really not the purview of our police department. But it would be the purview of our code enforcement and our police to enforce and enact zoning regulations, which would start off as an ordinance and then become part of the code.
Paula, the follow-up question to that. Have we taken a look at anything that's being done in like those Kansas City suburbs or any of the suburbs in Sedgwick County as far as short-term rentals? And what, other than Wichita's guidance, have we looked at any other options?
And I, I can look. I think that they're all kind of grappling with, what do we do? Because they're coming. I mean, we're part of a really close network next to the city of Wichita. And so, they're here. They're already here. And how do we deal with it? Now, I can say that almost every zoning code, of course, has special use condition. Same, same kind of thing in those zoning code regulations. So, they have a mechanism. It's just a matter of, do they want to simplify the mechanism or they want to continue with what the code is? So, they're not removing this idea of special use. And, and the other thing, quite frankly, is, it depends also on whether they are, they have an occasion to do the research to understand if there's short-term rentals in their, in their city, right? So, we happened to receive a complaint. We then try to identify what, what kind of magnitude we are facing here in the city. And some cities may not get a complaint and may never research what they have magnitude in their city. They do exist in every city.
I guess what I'm getting at with that is if you did, if we did some research, I'm sure we would maybe potentially come across some mechanisms that were put into that specific code. And so I think it'd be wise to look at those options to give us a better idea of, do we want to adjust it? How would that look?
And generally speaking, I can tell you that a lot of, of the smaller communities in Sedgwick County will follow the city of Wichita or maybe CD because they, they go, they, they took them over a year and a half just to put this together. They went to all of the districts. They talked to a lot of people. They pulled all the research. And so a lot of times it's easy to do that. But I'm happy to look at other areas in the state, um, also that probably our Kansas City has it. I, I mean, Manhattan is already starting to look at even long-term rental registrations. Like they don't even know who's doing business in the city, right? So I think everybody is kind of paying attention to what's happening related to rental property, short-term rental properties across the, across the state at least.
So what question I have, uh, as you look into this, can we limit the number of people that stay overnight in these properties? And can we limit the number of people present on the property, kind of like a, a fire marshal does with a restaurant? So there's only 120 occupants can be in this restaurant at a time. I'm not saying you'd put 120 in a house. I think you'd probably want to reduce it to more like 10, 15 at that max. But, but I, I do, I think it'd have to be a, a situation where you'd have to just go review and say, what's appropriate for this property? But, but anyway, can we even do that? And, and that's something just to go look at. I know you, I don't expect.
I think, I think we have to understand too, that the houses are, it's a scalable, right? Because you might have a house that has eight bedrooms, four bathrooms, which means if you had a king-sized bed, that alone would be 16 people. Then they have a basement maybe where they have, right? Other uses. So, um, and then you might have a house that only has three bedrooms and they're doing the same thing. So I, I would, I would be hard-pressed probably to find a limitation on the number of occupants because it'll be scalable according to the house. And it would be really hard to write a zoning code that would address every size of potential home in season.
Maybe you stayed it with the license.
Yeah. And so we can look at what other communities might have, uh, looked at. I just don't know that anybody will likely try to put a scale number on it, but I will absolutely research it. Of course I will.
I don't understand why you couldn't say so many people per square foot of house.
Yep. That might be a way.
I wanted to jump in. I've been talking a lot from people that want to do this and thinking about it as a one-off thing. On the flip side, I, I know this creates a lower trust society, you know, it affects, you know, whether you're going to let your kids go ride their bike as if who you know next door. And is that always turning over every other weekend or something? One thing I saw, just briefly looking around, uh, yesterday was like, there's a city in Colorado where they kind of had a flow chart. My concern about doing this is you get investors who are, could buy big lots. Could we, you know, maybe look into that as you look into other cities is, you know, you have a question of, are you a resident here? You know, whatever we could do legally. So basically we don't have, um, I would not want to see somebody buy up, you know, 50 houses as an investment and turn them all into short-term rentals. And so there was a flow chart saying, do you live here? You know, how many others do you have? Maybe have a limitation on, um, how many you can, you can own. So.
So were there any other questions that we wanted to ask Paula? I understand that there might be some citizens that wanted to speak to council. So if there are any citizens would like to speak about this issue, I'd give you opportunity to do that.
Are we going to put a time limit on that or just?
Well, uh, yeah, this isn't a formal meeting. If we, but I would like you to come to the podium, say your name and address, just so we know who you are and where you're from. But, and, and I won't put a timeline on it, but I will ask that if you start spending too long, then I'll say, hey, we probably have enough. Okay.
Well, I'm Debbie Craig and this is my husband Barry and we're at 5140.
Mr. Mayor, we should probably put a time limit on it. Just, just to be consistent.
Okay. I'm going to say five minutes. So let me put that in my phone here real quick. So I have, I have that. No, but I think they're, they're concerned about equal, equal access.
So I'm Deborah Craig and this is my husband Barry and we live at 5140 North Colonial Avenue. And a couple of things is we've used Airbnbs. We've used them. So it's hard for me to say, oh, let's not do it. And I'm, I'm not going to stand here and say that. But the problem being the next door neighbor of one right now is I live 5140 North Colonial Avenue is on a cul-de-sac. Okay? I'm the only one on the cul-de-sac with the driveway. I'm the only one on the cul-de-sac without an alley. So when they're filling the cul-de-sac up, I have dump trucks turning around in my driveway. I have delivery trucks turning around in my driveway and actually had a 15-passenger van unload the people staying in the house next door and leave their van in my driveway. So my husband has to go out and say, uh, you know, this isn't a parking space, you know? So, and we are just now planting our yard. So when you park on the cul-de-sac and you have a passenger get out the door, now they're stepping all through my yard. So my, my concern is, is definitely the parking. And I know that they have a nice driveway in the back and I know there's an alley. Also hearing that, well, we can't park in the alleys. Well, now we're back into the cul-de-sac. So, I mean, the, the noise, I mean, you know, you can deal with that. You're going to have that in a neighborhood. We do have a lot of, you know, 15 pizzas being delivered at 10:30 at night. And I'm also with the concern of different people coming every weekend. I have four grandchildren, love to, to ride out in the street. And once my yard's in, they're going to be playing in the yard. But it, my concern is the safety of all the different people that I have coming in and out of there. Again, we moved from southeast, we moved from Rose Hill and we moved from a, a community that probably should have had an HOA. So when we found Bel Air, which my family lives here as well, I fell in love with it. And walking through it, I felt safe. This is why we're here. My husband and I just built our forever home. And that's what we, we want to be here forever. We loved it. It was quiet. It was awesome. Now I get to deal with all of that every day. And I have not called the police because of parking, because I feel they have more important things to do than to manage my street parking. As I feel like they have more things to do that are safety-related. So, um, I, that's why I have not called the police for my driveway or my street or any of those items, because I feel like they have more important things to do. And sometimes the street's not very full, but sometimes there are. Right now there's 10 of them, I think, that are there for construction and staying for a length of time. All very nice people. And we've had to ask them to move their cars. We could get dump trucks in this week, which they did. But there's 10 cars, the back's full. Now they're, you know, back in front. So my biggest concern is the parking issue and the number of people that can stay. You're not going to have a family of four stay in this home. We're going to have large family gatherings, large parties, those kinds of issues, which again, we can deal with those. We understand that, that, you know, the parties and things happen and the noise happens. But sometimes at two in the morning, when you're hearing doors slam, kind of startles you a little bit. And if my grandchildren are spending the night, I would prefer, you know, that not happening either due to the amount of, of cars. So I appreciate you listening to us, but my concern would be is if you go to change this or you want to talk about this, I'd love for there to be a public hearing. So you could hear from more than just me. And I know there's other people that would like to express their concerns, but I'd like there not to be something done without those of us being affected, being heard. Okay? Thank you.
Alright, thank you. I do think that something else I would like to ask Paula to please address is, uh, any, what limitations you can put on parking? Maybe you require that a, a person who's setting such a, such a, uh, house up, that they identify how they're going to address parking for whatever occupancy rate that we would say is appropriate for that, that, that house.
I will definitely dig into the parking and how we handle it now, the same way with noise and bring back information. I just want to be clear too, that this was just the first conversation. I knew that there was discussions happening. We wanted to get in front of it in case you receive phone calls, et cetera. And I also wanted input on where, what kinds of information would be helpful before we start thinking about what needs to happen next. So I appreciate those comments and I will make sure that we include parking considerations.
And to her, uh, to, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name. That Miss Craig, Mrs. Craig's, uh, comment, uh, you know, I have a large family. I have, there's seven of us siblings. Okay? So when we get together, it's quite a group. But we do rent these houses and we, we do have that. But every place we always rented them had lots of land. But so, uh, but you know, when you have 40 or 50 of us, that, that makes a, a pretty good, pretty good sized group. So anyway, but thank you.
This, this really sounds like something that needs a limit on the number of people because it sounds like she's living next door to an event center.
I can talk about that because it's my house.
Living in a hotel.
That is possible.
I can talk about that, Mr. Welch, to my house. So I am Jerry. So can you please? 5136 North Colonial Avenue, which is, um, people here might rec, might recognize it being the house with the basketball court inside. That's it. So that's my house. I built it here in 2014. Uh, we broke ground in 2013. We were the first house in this neighborhood that had built since the recession. Uh, we sort of kick-started the developments there. I've been, I was a resident here. I lived in that house for 12 years. Uh, and just recently, because of some situations surrounding divorce, I have to at least temporarily, uh, rent the house. I do intend to move back in at some point. But this has become a real point of frustration for me. You know, the, there are, with all due respect to Paula, that the, the current regulations do allow for rentals and that includes short-term rentals. And I'm happy to have a conversation with Ms. Rock or, uh, Mr. Henry about this at another time. Doesn't need to be brought up here. But this, this is an allowed use. Um, it is a single-family home. You may rent a single-family home without a business license in this town. Everybody does it. The fact that it's rented for 30 days at a time or a year at a time or a week at a time is irrelevant. Um, you may rent your home in the city. Uh, that being said, I'm, uh, this is my neighborhood. Tyler's my friend, lives on my alley. I've got many friends in the alley. We just had a birthday party celebrating, uh, a young child in the alley. I brought my kids back over, um, to celebrate that party. Had, had the, had the house been vacant, we probably would have done it at the house. This, this is my neighborhood too. I've lived here longer actually than the people who will be here to complain about my house. Um, I'm a longtime member of this community. I go to Church of Resurrection with you, Mayor, um, and have for a long time. And, and it's, it's really a point of frustration that I'm allowed to, that, that this is a permitted use. It's an allowed use. There's another neighbor across the street or across the alley who does it too. Um, and I try, and I'm, I'm a good neighbor. I try to be a good neighbor. Everybody has my phone number. They're welcome to call me. I will absolutely come and fix any problem that they have. Uh, I do tell my guests to park in the driveway. Once in a while it happens, someone parks in an alley and when I get that notification, I reach out to them immediately and ask them to move their cars. Um, I have now started asking them not to park in the, in the, uh, in the cul-de-sac. And here's one thing about that. And this is something I think that maybe Mr. Dean brought up, and I think actually, uh, Mr. David brought, brought up. You are going, if, if, when I lived here, I had five kids, three of them were teenagers at the same time. They had cars. They parked in, they parked in the cul-de-sac. If I were still living here, my kids would be parking in the cul-de-sac every day. And as it is now, once in a blue moon, we have guests who have more cars for whatever reason or guests over and, and use the cul-de-sac. By and large, they're allowed to use my three-car garage. They're allowed to use, uh, the driveway parks another five to seven cars in it. And I ask all my guests, please use the driveway. Do not, and I've now started asking them not to park in the cul-de-sac. And I've asked them to use the, uh, street-side parking if necessary out on, uh, out on Colonial or on St. James to, to avoid overload. Of course, not parking in the alley. Um, and I'm willing to work with my neighbors to absolutely cure any problems. There's not any parties there. That's not been a thing. Um, actually, the one complaint I got about that was on a day when it wasn't rented. It must've been a friend who was there. I haven't quite tracked down the issue yet, but there was no guests there the one night I ever had to complain about it. And again, when I lived there, I had teenage kids. My daughter had an after-prom party at our pool in the backyard. And I think they went until like three o'clock in the morning. I promise you, we were far louder than my guests are. My guests were told there are no parties. They are not to be outside making any noise after 10 o'clock. I am more strict with my guests than I was with myself and my kids and the people who were there, um, otherwise. In fact, the house is vacant. I stay there when it's, when it's vacant. I, I, I'm still there about half the time. Um, and I had friends over one night and I think we were out there until about 2:00 AM on the patio. My guests don't stay out there until 2:00 AM. I ring cameras so I can monitor if, if, if there's a situation, someone's being loud, I'm happy to take care of it. So it's a little bit of frustration for, you know, Mayor, you, you rent these houses. I rent short-term rentals. We all use them. But then we get the sort of NIMBY attitude of not in my backyard and not, there's nothing safe, unsafe about the people renting my homes. It's basketball teams in, in, in town for a tournament for the weekend. It's, it's people like Mayor's family who are having a, a get-together with, uh, four or five siblings and their children. When we do have a lot of guests, there's never been a situation where I've had 15 or 20 adult guests having a party. If there are a lot of guests at the house, half of them are children. This is a family home with family guests. It rents, people pay more than a thousand dollars a night to rent it. There's no riffraff hanging around. Do they order pizzas at night? I'm sure they do. I'm sure they do. Okay? But guess what? We order pizza at night. My kids order pizzas at night. My kids have DoorDash delivered. There's nothing going on here that wasn't going on before. It's just that people really have this visceral reaction to short-term rentals. And as, if there are problems, I will take care of them. I'm actually more strict with my guests than I am with my own children when they stay there. And so again, I'm, I'm happy to take care of those issues. Um, happy to be a good neighbor. I am a neighbor. I live here. I'm going to live here again. I've lived here for a long time. I know a lot of my neighbors. So I am just as interested as everyone else in making sure that my guests are good neighbors, just like I would be a good neighbor when I'm there and when I will be there. So I, again, you know, uh, everybody moved into this neighborhood knowing that this was a situation that was actually already, um, a short-term rental across the street. This is no surprise to anyone. It's just a little bit of NIMBYism saying, I don't, I don't want this in my backyard, even though, even though I use these, even though I appreciate these, even though. And again, this is a revenue generator for the county. We don't have a lot of businesses yet in, in the city. But the guests that stay there eat at the restaurants nearby. They shop at the Dollar General. They do pay transient guest tax. I know that all my guests pay through the platforms that they book through, transient guest tax, and that goes to the city. We don't have any hotels.
So we need to wrap up.
Yeah. We don't have any hotels. So, uh, uh, completely agreed. If, if, if we're going to have a neighborhood where we, where, where you can have your family come to town and have a place to stay, this is it. Otherwise they have to go to Wichita or Park City or somewhere else to find a hotel to stay. This is all we have for now. I'm perfectly open to reasonable reg, regulations. Um, and I, and I, I think I'm going to be more strict than any regulations that, uh, that you would apply. So I'm not, not even opposed to that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, well, he does make a good, good comment about the parties. Most places I rented do have rules that you can't have parties at those house, in those houses. And so I think that's an appropriate thing that an owner would do, but maybe you'd look at it in ordinance as well. I don't know. But just something to think about. So those are good things to think about. Anyway. Were there any other citizens that wanted to speak? Ms. Lindsay Brazil.
Hello again, council. My name is Lindsay Poreusso. I live at 5239 North Colonial. I actually live to the north of Mr. Kiefer's property. Um, I appreciate what he has said. I do have a few points I want to bring to your attention. First of all, uh, I've lived in this home since August of 2023. So I've been there more than two years. Uh, this property became a Airbnb in May of this year. I actually found out about it, not because anyone had the courtesy to tell me. There was no notice or anything like that. In fact, I hadn't talked to Mr. Kiefer in person until the HOA meeting where I went to go to voice my frustrations because I literally had no one to talk to. At that time, uh, when it became an Airbnb in May, we started having extensive amounts of large populations of, of groups. There, it advertised that it slept 22. And while his family was there for almost the two years that we lived there, I can certainly assure you that at no point was that property as highly used as it is today. I didn't have the same concerns. I didn't have a couple, as he alluded to. Still, this was in July. He has not yet figured out why this happened. But in July, I walked out to take my dog to go to the bathroom at 11:30 at night. And there were people having sex in his pool at 11:30 at night, so loud I could hear it from my house. The music was going. I have a recording. If anyone would like documentation of this event occurring. This is truly disruptive to our neighborhood. I moved to Bel Air from Willabend. Because I wanted a more neighborly experience, I wanted to be in a residential area. Yes, there was an Airbnb across the way. I didn't notice any trouble until this one opened in May. It got to the point that I felt I had no choice but to go and speak out about it because it was, uh, was infringing on my ability to enjoy my home. I have the exact same property rights as anyone else. And I disagree with Mr. Kiefer's assessment that this is allowed by code. I am also an attorney. I've read the same thing. I'm sure you all are stunned to hear that attorneys have different opinions on this. But I do think that there is a case to be made that this is a business and we are specifically in an area that precludes business. And I appreciate that he would like to move back. Let's make it happen. Have no problem with having him back, but this is a true nuisance. And I am at my wit's end and I would really like this council to consider some kind of fair regulation of property so that I can enjoy mine, uh, the way I intended when I moved here two years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. So are there any other citizens that would like to speak to council? If not, thank you for your comments and, uh, we'll continue with our deliberations. And, uh, I think we've given Ms. Downs plenty of. And I think we've given Ms. Downs plenty of, of things to work on, but it sounds like there may be some urgency here, but we probably should consider also having a public hearing on this. I think that was a suggestion that someone made as well. So I think that's a good suggestion. Everybody got all their, their ideas out and questions answered? Okay, well, thank you. And I know you got pretty big tasks ahead of you, so.
Thank you for comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the, the next item on the agenda is airport zoning code discussion. And I understand we are not ready to have that discussion. The staff still needs to do some more research there with that. And this has actually to do with height restrictions and those kinds of things near Jabara Airport, because you do have planes flying overhead. So anyway, but we're not ready to have the discussion, so we will go on. Are there any other issues we need to talk about with, in this workshop?
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we to the airport? Is that, I, I apologize. I was.
I just said we weren't going to talk about it.
I, I, I know that we've went on, if I could just give like a quick little summary, but I won't go into too much detail. It's been a late night. The whole reason this was placed on the workshop tonight was to give you a heads up of a new ordinance that will be coming for your consideration. And of course, if approved by the governing body, it will become a part of the code. As of September sixteenth of this year, the city of Wichita and the Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners approved an update to the ordinance, I'm sorry, a new ordinance and an update to their code. And it all involves airport hazards. What is an airport hazard? It is anything that could affect the ability of individuals using an airport, whether they are taking off, whether they are landing, whether they are flying over and around. This is a complicated subject area. There's not only layers of safety and things to consider, but there's conical spheres of analysis as well. I did not know that until recently. Also, the Director of Community Development has been educating me on that as well and I appreciate that. But taking all of that into account, the city of Wichita wants to be very proactive in ensuring the safety of their airports, of people in the city and property and structures surrounding it. Consequently, the ordinance is extensive. It discusses Beach Factory Airport, McConnell Air Force Base, Cessna Aircraft Field, the Wichita Eisenhower Airport and the Colonel James Jabar Airport. Not only do they create an ordinance, but they also created a corresponding map showing all of the airports and showing the zoning regulations. What would the zoning regulations be? They specifically regulate and restrict the height of structures, objects, natural vegetation growth, anything in the vicinity of that airport. When it comes to the passing of this specific ordinance, the city of Wichita, Sedgwick County is hopeful that the city of Bel Air will adopt zoning regulations as well for any type of height restrictions, buildings, growth, all of that within the vicinity of Jabara. It would be easy for me to go and take this ordinance that was prepared by the city of Wichita, parrot a lot of the facts, but we want to take it a little bit slower, put it down on paper, show it to Director of Community Development, show it to City Engineering, show it to the city manager before it comes to you. But that is why everyone is wanting to be proactive about zoning regulations surrounding. For Bel Air, it would be Jabara. But it's not, no one's trying to tell you what you should or shouldn't do. It's all about being proactive on safety and zoning regulations. If you have any questions, I'm glad to take them. What my plan is, is to put together this ordinance, provide it to staff, then provide it to council at a council meeting, hopefully in November, and if not December, so that you can take into account, look at, make any changes, ask questions. But that, that's all I was going to share, Mayor.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I, I, obviously we work, a lot of us work in aviation, so we're very concerned about aviation safety. I was, I, I, just as a side note, I was almost shocked to learn that Wichita authorized a hill port to be built within a half mile of the runway at Jabara Airport. And it's like, really? What were you thinking about when they approved that? But that's another subject. So anyway, if there are any other questions or comments that we need to make about this. Okay, well, if not, I will adjourn the meeting and we will see everybody next Tuesday for our regular city council meeting. Thank you for your time.